The Morgan Town Building Commission to order, does anyone want me to read the pre-meeting announcement?
No.
Okay, first item on the agenda is general public comments for matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any comments for any matters not on the agenda? Okay, the second item is we have to elect officers for the year.
I move to keep Pete Masters as chair and Bill Petros as vice-chair.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Come on!
You guys have to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I guess we'll abstain, right?
Next item on the agenda is meeting, or minutes from the December 12th meeting.
Move to approve as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, move on to new business, SP 24-199, Eric Wingvare, 445 Van Boris Road.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of things at the top. You have your staff reports. Where I'm going to be working from tonight are the slides that's in front of you, and the way they are, they were printed off is just open them up, it's on the long end, so, but I'll have them up on the screen as well. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and provide this kind of brief overview of the project. The applicants are here, they can address any other comments or concerns or questions that the commission has, and then we could go one by one through each of the new business items there. So with that, again, we're here tonight to talk about the new complex and facility for WVU Medicine's medical clinic and office building, as well as a parking garage facility at the intersection of Elmer Prince and Van Boris Roads. The medical clinic office building would have four floors and approximately 152,000 square feet, 102 exam rooms and 44 testing rooms, and the adjacent parking garage, which would be connected by a two-story pedestrian bridge, would have five floors. The total between the parking garage and the existing surface lot that's there now that may be reconfigured a little bit for the project would have a total of 1,100 spaces and 20 ADA accessible spaces. These are the two parcels of land where the project will be built on. The lower portion at the intersection of Elmer Prince and Van Boris is where the I Institute will be, and the parking garage and existing surface lot, and a power substation would be on the more northerly parcel on Van Boris Road. This is a copy or look at the zoning map. You can kind of see we've got several different districts in here, B2, OI, which is Office Institutional, and then R1, which is pretty common for WVU's campus and WVU property in general, including the main campus for the hospital, and that's one of the reasons why the applicants are requesting a zoning map amendment this evening. This is the first floor, will include exam rooms, testing rooms, patient waiting areas, loading dock for the facility, and normal, you know, HVAC and other mechanical rooms in that first floor. Second floor will also have exam rooms, testing rooms, patient waiting areas. Third floor will be outpatient operating rooms and post anesthesia care units, and the fourth floor will be a mixture of exam rooms, conference and meeting space, and offices for staff. So that's a brief overview of the development program for the building. Again, the applicant can provide any more detail that he would like when they speak here shortly. This is a picture of what the connection, the two-story pedestrian bridge over to the five-story parking garage will look like, and this is two elevations I wanted to show. The west elevation on the top is what people would be seeing from Van Boris Road if they're going northbound, looking over to their right. That would be the elevation that, you know, what they'd be seeing. And then the south elevation, which is the lower drawing, is where that would, that part of the building would face the I Institute. And I just highlighted here for reference purposes, that's where that red circle is, that's where the connections will be for the pedestrian bridge across to the new clinic. The next slide shows kind of just the site plan for the project, the I Institute on the right-hand side, the parking garage on the left. Power substation is north of the parking garage, and then the red star represents the northside fire station and where that is located. There'll be three primary ways to access the facility and the complex. One will be off, directly off Van Boris, with an expanded entryway there, as well as a dedicated fire lane. So when there's a call from the fire station, they can go directly through that access drive, and they will have a dedicated lane, and so they can get out onto, onto Van Boris. There's also an access, obviously, now that already exists on the Elmer Prince, and that will remain, and then there'll be an improvement made to the medical drive up to, or the Mountaineer Station, that driveway that access, the larger surface parking lot and the PRT and all of that, up that direction to the west, or to the east, I should say, there'll be another access there. It should be noted that staff has worked with, as well as the applicant have worked with, the Fire Marshal's Office, and they support both the dedicated fire lane and the pedestrian bridge that's proposed to cross and connect the two facilities, meets their needs and is being compliant with what they need to do, and are supportive of it. This is another drawing that shows, again, the star is the approximate location of the northside fire station. The area highlighted in yellow is the dedicated fire lane for our vehicles to get out of Van Boris, and then this is the existing access drive that will be slightly modified where the existing traffic light is located for ingress, egress purposes. Again, and this is the kind of the circulation into the parking garage from the access drive that goes up to the Mountaineer Station, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's, it's a one-way in from the access drive from Van Boris that goes into the parking garage, or is that, okay, so one way into that direction, but then there is, you can kind of see on the flow, there'll be a one-direction into the parking garage where the access drive is, and then out onto what's going to be, I mean, a perimeter road that goes around the backside of the parking garage. There'll be opportunities for ingress and egress there.
Is the main entrance going to be off of Van Boris, then?
The main entrance to...
This facility, the parking garage?
Yes, if somebody, if somebody's coming to drop off and they're on Van Boris going north, the most, probably the easiest way would be to come off, turn right on the access drive, drop off at the institute, which is over here on the right-hand side, circle through, and then if they need to park their vehicle, they could go into the garage and circle up. The applicant's also working on a pedestrian signage plan that would direct people to go into the garage and move them across the bridges where they would need to go for their, for whatever medical needs they have, or what they're having done at the clinic.
So just to clarify, is that, I can't read it, is the fire lane in the middle of that, that red?
Yes, the red stripe.
So that never gets blocked?
Correct.
And the fire truck can get out of first traffic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, as a result, in looking at the development plan, the applicants here requesting three different items. One is a minor subdivision to consolidate property that they've acquired, as well as to move the, and I'll show this in a little more detail in a little bit, but to relocate the access drive off of Van Boris, so there's going to be some property that's going to need to change hands and some parcels consolidated, so that's application number one. Application number two is that they're going to, asking to rezone the property, and I don't want to go back too far, but if we go back to the, let's see, zoning map, again, there's three different zoning districts. The I clinic would be on, as it stands, would be split zoned, and then you can see where the parking facility would be, there's two different zoning districts there. So the request is to re, the request is to rezone all of the property as part of this redevelopment project to a B2.
On the new plan, didn't we have some kind of medical zone or something we were proposing on the new comprehensive plan, or am I misremembering that?
The comprehensive plan makes a recommendation to, like, create a WVU district, and what that looks like now, but it also, also looks at, like, making that a mixed-use corridor and higher intensity development along that area. So, yes.
Can you, oh, yes. Can you back to where it shows the rendering of the, the building and the parking garage and the pedestrian bridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, so that entrance road there, is that going to, that's going to be the main entrance into it, is that correct?
That will be probably the most accessible, but it depends on which, where you're coming from. If you're coming from the north, south, you know, you may want to, depending on, you may want to go to the traffic light and turn in to go to the garage there, and maybe the applicant can explain that, but it's, you know, it depends on which direction you're coming from, I would say.
And I'm wondering if anybody knows how far that entrance is from the existing traffic light?
Pretty close.
Mm-hmm.
I would say.
And I'm wondering if eventually there's going to be a traffic light needed there. That's beyond our scope, but, but that's, if that becomes the main access point, that's a concern I have.
The applicant did have a traffic study done, which the executive summary was including in your packet, and several recommendations were made, but a traffic light at that particular location was not one of the recommendations, if I recall, but...
That's his time.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So with that, I'm happy to go into the, if I, if I can, Mr. President, would we be able to look at item C first, go kind of in reverse, C, B, and A, kind of builds on themselves, with the subdivision request first?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, so this is the proposed minor subdivision and lot consolidation of property for the I Institute project. So this map here kind of shows the, in red, and it's probably better in your packet, but the red dotted line outlines the three new parcels that will be created from the project. If you look here, let me, oh, it shows up on me, this yellow kind of line here shows the existing access drive that is owned by the Morgantown Building Commission, and that's one of the things that City Council, as well as the Building Commission's, are working on to, you know, to relocate and realign that existing access drive. But this is how it's kind of positioned right now in relation to the actual proposed parcels, and we'll walk through this here. So again, the yellow area is what's existing, again, it matches, this is, this, this long area here is this area here. For reference purposes.
Okay, I missed where your pointer was, I was looking, this long area here is this area?
Yeah, so, sorry.
These are pages in there, too.
Right, but he said, when he said, "long area here is this area here," it doesn't help.
And so when you look at that and take in with the rest of the property that goes on, or accesses Elmer Prince, that's that yellow configuration. So what's going to happen is there's going to be some swapping of property, conveying of property, and then that access drive is going to be relocated northward. Oops, go this way. So that there will be three new parcels of land, and that, parcel one, in this, in this, on this site plan, is the one with the parking garage, parcel two is the I clinic, and parcel three is the Morgantown Building Commission.
Okay.
The new line, which it doesn't look like it made it into the PowerPoint, would be, the new access drive will be, where is it, here, as part of the land swap, and there's some parcels or subdivision of property that's not able to be seen because of the highlight there. But essentially, we'll have three new parcels of land that all meet or exceed the required lot provisions.
Okay.
And that's all I have, sir, on that particular item.
Okay. So is there any, will the petitioner have anything they want to say about this one? This is just a subdivision one. Okay. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff moves to approve with the conditions in the packet.
You move or you recommend?
Recommend.
Okay.
You said you can't move anything, right?
Just checking.
Darren!
He's listed, he's on top of his game today. I just got elected president here, I didn't want to usurp.
That's all right.
Okay. So we have staff recommendations. Any motions or discussion?
Move to approve conditional to staff, well, with staff conditions. We are not on our top game today, are we?
Thank you.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Okay, so which one you want to do next? Do you want to do 25-3 or 24-199?
Map 25-3, please.
Okay.
So again, this app, this application is requesting that the two parcels to be created be zoned, be zoned B2. The map on the left shows the existing conditions and how its several properties are zoned differently, and the proposed, the map on the right would show what the zoning map would look like if the application were approved. Again, the parcel that's owned by the Morgantown Building Commission, and that will be modified, would remain OI. The only two parcels being rezoned are related to the clinic and the parking garage. And that's it, sir.
Okay. Guys, have anything you want to say about that one? That was pretty easy, too, right? Okay. Ricky's guidance, sir, here.
Yeah.
Okay, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval, subjective and conditions in the packet.
Okay. So we have to move to forward to City Council a recommendation, right, one way or the other? Okay. Do I have any motions?
Recommend approval to City Council with staff conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? And that one's unanimous, too.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to 24-199.
Yes, and this is the type three site plan, development of significant impact approval Again, here's the site plan that was provided by the applicant. The red star represents where the northside fire station is located. There's the I Institute, the parking garage, and the power substation location behind the garage. And based on the review, both with our team, the applicant will need, or is requesting four variances, two of them related to setbacks, or three of them related to setbacks, and one of them related to the actual, what is it, long-term parking for bicycle storage. There will be short-term bicycle storage, but our ordinance requires for developments by code to have long-term storage, and the applicant's requesting variance relief from that. And the other two items that the applicant will be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals next week is for two conditional uses. Because there's no parking provided on the site where the I clinic is, they're asking for a conditional use to have off-site parking, which has to be within 300 feet of the, of the building, which this will be, and because it will be a shared facility, not just with the I clinic, but for other WVU medicine purposes, they're asking for a conditional use for the, a shared parking facility for the garage. The garage by right in a B2 zone is permitted, but because of the way it's structured, that's why those conditional uses are going to be asked for by the BZA.
Ricky, can you go over for the setback where they run afoul, what they would be and what they're proposing?
Yes, so the, let's start with the more northerly parcel with the parking garage. So the determination was made that the front, or lot front, is on Van Boris. So the minimum, the maximum setback is 30 feet, they're asking for, I would think, additional 23 feet to be set back for the property, and applicants can speak to that, it's probably had to do with stormwater retention and the existing, yeah. The other thing related to that particular building is on the side, the side yard setback needs to be at least five foot, and as you can see where that blue line is, that traces the, where the setbacks are, it does encroach, or it's right there. So that's why the applicant's...
Is there any structure in there, or is it just the setback for the blue line? I'm having trouble understanding that.
Pardon me?
So where the blue line is, the blue lines you're talking about, that's where the building would be, or is it just the parking structure, or parking lot? Is there structure or lot, I guess?
Let me clarify, so the red line is the property line.
Okay.
The blue line, that's the minimum lot front?
Maximum goes around the building. This is the side, side rear setback, and the black line is the parking facility.
Gotcha.
There's the encroachment on the side. Yep.
It actually, that was one and a half feet from the property line, I, what it looks like.
Yes, it looks like, according to the applicant, you can verify, it looks like they're asking for five feet of variance relief, so it'd be right up to the property line.
And that property line is the access, is the end of the roadway, I guess you could say, that goes and is going over the property mission?
It, this, this part here, that's, that's the new access drive.
Okay. Thank you.
It wouldn't encroach onto?
Sure.
The building commission's property, but it'd be right up to, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Does the city have any restrictions on, I'll say residences, but any other things close to power substations? Is there, are any restrictions on buildings, et cetera, close to power substations?
Not, not in the zoning code that I'm aware of. There is height restrictions for what would be, that would be considered an accessory structure. It will be screened, it will be fenced, but I'm not sure of the height or what the...
No, sir.
Yeah.
It's not truly a power substation, is it a breaker box?
Oh, now you gotta, now you're talking, now you gotta cut to the microphone. You gotta cut to the microphone. There you go.
I was thinking, high voltage, power, men sleeping in a building close by, but that's not the issue here, so, okay, never mind.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Sure. You sure? Okay.
Going once, going twice, I'm sure.
You guys want to say anything about this one? If you do, you gotta cut to the microphone and say anything.
Yes, but, what less once?
But you can't, we're not discouraging you.
If you're good, I'm good.
Okay. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval of the type three site plan with the conditions in the packet.
I have a couple of questions again, sorry, Ricky. Look at the conditions there, the last one, I think, mentioned about a submittal of landscaping plans and a couple of other plans?
Yes, sir.
Is, because I didn't see a landscape plan in the packet, went over that, is there something else that anticipation of the changing to landscaping or something, something else, or is it safe to assume that this is the landscaping plan that's to be approved under this condition?
Captain, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's still some sort of discussion of how the parking situation will work adjacent to the...
Okay.
The back surface lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the security for the actual hospitals, there're going to be some more islands, I think, Damian Asset Engineer, producing separation, so they're still a little bit working that back parking lot.
The back parking lot, that's kind of what's existing now, where it's going to be the, next to the new bill, the new, okay.
Yep.
The back surface, like, it's all open up, like, more commercial, but we have to soften that up a little bit, just...
Yes.
Sure, and so softening up would be including landscape islands, the kind of conform?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
And those, those plans, when they're developed, with the lighting plans, are going to be submitted to you all for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's the architect or whomever, but just one quick question, I didn't see, I know there's probably a signage package, and you, there's some discussion of pedestrian kind of wayfinding signage. Is there any monument signage, like on a, not an out parcel, but something that's going to be standing near Van Boris or something else? I didn't see anything on the site plan, if there's proposed signage.
Go back to John Stroud.
But yes, the short answer is absolutely, there'll be some signage on the site, as you've just mentioned. We could provide that, actually, it's well-developed enough that we could provide that at any time. It's not perfectly refined and complete, but to that extent, it's absolutely, absolutely at that point.
Yeah, so there'll be signings, obviously, on the building to make it known what, who owns it and what it's there for, but there'll be some signs being developed there in the grass spots, which is, I think it's a sign here, wayfinding, there's several throughout the entrances where you would enter, inner end, so we can have direct folks to where they need to go.
Perfect.
But I think when you come around 705, obviously, the building's going to stick out, but there is signage being planned, and as Eric alluded to, we're still working out a little bit with logistics and security and everything else, so those are, and still in works.
Yeah, I know. But, so the, I'm guessing right at that main entrance there, there is plans for a larger monument sign, not just wayfinding signage, or, not sure.
Eric, you may elaborate on that. There is a sign up front, but I'm not sure how large it is, but there is a general sign, I believe, facing both directions, coming south and north in that grass area to both sides, I believe.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm having a hard time picturing exactly what y'all are saying, just from the ability of not being...
When you're coming into the facility, when you're coming into the facility to drop off a patron, I believe Gina had two signs on either side of that entrance, is that correct?
I think there was, I think there was at least one, I can't remember if we decided to go with two. I know there was some discussion around two, and we thought it might, it might make sense, because if there was a car kind of blocking as it was, you know, queuing to get out, but I thought, if I'm not mistaken, the latest version was to, because that sign would be tall enough, and you'd presumably see it, even if there was a car kind of waiting in line to get out, so to speak, that we were going to just go with one. So that's what I remember, now I can confirm and frankly get that latest plan over to this group at any time.
That, we, all employees are going to enter at stoplight.
Yep.
That's the, that's how it's going to go, so that's majority of your people, actually. And then all patrons who drop off, hopefully for the first time will come there, then the goal, actually, after that, we hope they start using the stoplight, because I'll know where they're going.
Right.
But we want the wayfinding sign, generally speaking, will be coming from the north side, coming driving north, and most likely, that's why we want that, so you can see it pop a little bit.
Perfect. I have one other question, too, and just kind of looking at the more of the landscaping here, I was just curious as to, I know that the, we have kind of requirements about the kind of turf grass area, just kind of the thoughts behind, with the river rock and certain areas, why that was kind of, is it, is it irrigation kind of issues, or, or why the choice made there?
The choice mainly was for ease of maintenance, truthfully.
Okay.
That's something we can work with the hospital and make sure, but when we went back and forth with iterations, obviously, we looked for ease of maintenance, and that was kind of their request.
Sure.
But I think that's something we can revisit, depending officially where it's at.
Okay.
That was the whole purpose, more maintenance purposes.
Sure, yeah, I figured as much, just, just curious to get on the record... I figured as much, just, just curious to get on the record. But lastly, I saw on there, there was Radford pears proposed. Can we get rid of those? Replace with a...
Oh, the pear?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. Get rid of that.
Yes, in fact, I would go so far, I mean, I'm sure y'all would be amenable to it, but...
What was it again?
To, on the landscape plan they're proposing, one, the, Radford pears.
Oh, those are good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when it blows down the trees, I don't think we're having anything.
Sure.
So that's fair, that's a... Bring up, we'll change it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But other than that...
They're invasive and stinky.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that's an easy fix.
Yes. I was hoping you could say that.
Yeah, we'll change that any minute.
Great. I think that's, that's it I have, questions. Thank you all.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
I think Brennan should, he had more questions and more conditions.
Well, I think I just, more of clarification. Actually, that reminds me before, last thing, trash. Is it all going to be proposed? Is there any out dumpsters, or is it all going to be internal to the building?
There's going to be a compacted dumpster. I apologize, I don't, I'm a British tall here, I might have Steve do this for me. This area right there is going to be the back, we call it the appendage to the loading dock, and it's going to be a dumpster and trash receptacle.
You're going to one huge, kind of...
It's, I still can't reach it, but it's right there. Okay. Perfect.
Two outlets.
Perfect, okay, great. Kind of back of house?
You really want to, that's what the idea was, keep it back of house.
Wonderful. Great. I'm done with, that was my last comment.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
With that, though, I, for the clarification, I would make a motion to approve with staff's recommended conditions as presented in the staff report.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Okay. See, that was, that was pretty easy, wasn't it?
What's your next stop, BZA?
Yeah, next...[1713.12]